Mr. President.
Here. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing today for our comments by, oh, council member me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, even though I didn't look at it good enough to see that it was me, I'm glad it was me because I wanted to take the opportunity today to remind all of us that there was a former city council member that sat here who passed away last week. His name was Frank Brown. Frank was a colleague of mine also at Channel 7. So Frank has been involved in the community for a long period of time, spent time as a journalist both at KFAB and Channel 3 and Channel 7, quite frankly, and served on this city council for 12 years. I ask you to keep him in your prayers. His funeral is this coming Thursday at 11:00 PM at St. Mark Baptist Church. But again, Frank Brown, a valued member of the staff at the three stations, as well as a very supportive and concerned member, especially as it relates to the North Omaha community, Frank Brown was very involved in that. So just keep him in our prayers and hopefully he and his family, we're going to put something together for him, a proclamation to, you know, for the funeral that day. We just ask you to keep him in your prayers. Thank you all.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. Council thanks you all for being here today. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask you to turn off or mute any of your electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
Oh, we have two proclamations.
Two proclamations. Okay, I guess we have two proclamations. Councilmember Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be reading the first one. It's for the Omaha Healthy Kids Alliance. It's whereas the Omaha Healthy Kids Alliance is a nonprofit organization that works to create a healthy home for every child. And whereas for delivering excellent environmental asthma management, Omaha Healthy Kids Alliance was awarded the EPA's National Environmental Leadership Award, the highest recognition a program and its leaders can receive. And whereas since 2014, the Omaha Healthy Kids Alliance Asthma In-Home Response Program has performed home assessments, designed home construction interventions, and educated families to eliminate environmental triggers for children, resulting in fewer missed school days, ER visits, and symptomatic days. And whereas past recipients of the National Environment Leadership Award include Zuckerberg San Francisco General Hospital, AmeriHealth Caritas Green and Healthy Homes Initiative, and Tufts Medical Center. And whereas Omaha Healthy Kids Alliance representatives will participate in the Allergy and Asthma Network's 22nd Allergy and Asthma Awareness Day on Capitol Hill on May 8, 2019, where they will be officially honored. And now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Omaha recognizes the Omaha Healthy Kids Alliance and thanks them for their service to the Omaha community and witness whereof we have set our hands and caused the official seal of the City of Omaha to be affixed on the 7th day of May 2019. And if you wanted to just make a brief statement, please.
Oh, for sure. Well, my name is Depree Klax. I'm the case coordinator for our asthma program. For all the families that we serve, I probably come in contact with about 90% of them. For me, first off, thank you. For me, this is especially pleasing because, you know, as this job is rewarding, it also can kind of be a buzzkill, so to speak, being that I deal with a lot of families that are living in substandardized living and are struggling. You know, at the end of the day, I hop back in my truck and I go back to my house and I still understand that these families are still struggling. You know, so a war like this will re-energize me to get back out to this community, especially from a grassroots level and help more families. It's essentially, you know, to make sure those kids can grow up in a healthy home. So thank you for that.
Yes, thank you.
Well, since Mr. Palermo was worn out from the first proclamation, we'll go ahead and have Frank read the second.
This one is for National Tourism Week in Omaha. Whereas every year, 12.3 million tourists visit Omaha to experience our world-renowned zoo, our beautiful museums, and our spectacular dining and craft brew scene, they travel to Omaha to visit family and friends, to attend a sporting event, a convention, a concert, or just to get away for a long weekend. And whereas these travelers are making a significant impact in our local economy, spending more than $1.2 billion every year in our community. And whereas these travelers generate significant tax revenues for federal, state, and local governments, provide essential funding to support local services and programs for our residents, and directly support 17,280 jobs for our friends and family who work in our community hotels, attractions, retail, restaurants, and other small businesses. And whereas tourism success locally can be attributed to productive partnerships with industry, business, and governmental leaders who understand its value and support. In fact, on May 8, 2019, Visit Omaha, in partnership with Sarpy County Tourism and the Council of Us Convention and Visitors Bureau, will celebrate frontline tourism employees at the Third Annual OMA Tourism Awards. And whereas National Tourism Week is celebrated from May 5 through May 11 to bring attention to the industry's significant economic, educational, cultural, and social benefits. And now therefore we, the City Council of the City of Omaha, do hereby declare May 5 through May 11, 2019, as National Tourism Week in Omaha. In witness whereof, we have set our hands and caused the official seal of the City of Omaha to be affixed on this 7th day of May 2019. So I thank someone from, would you like to?
I can't thank you enough for the support that you show through tourism. And I think, Councilman Harding, you said it all, 12.3 million visitors.
Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Tracy McPherson, Director of Communications for Visit Omaha. Thank you. The 12.3 million visitors, $1.2 million, and 17,280 jobs. That's what tourism does for our community. So thank you for your support. We do appreciate it.
Thank you. And I think we had a briefing from Keith last week, too, about all the great work that you and your organization have done and continue to do. And this is a great recognition for those efforts of the people in the industry that really work day in and day out to provide those services.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Items 6 to 9 can be considered together for Evergreen Acres located southwest of 132nd Street and Bennington Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 6, an ordinance to rezone this property from AG District to DR District. Item 7, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Evergreen Acres. Item 8, a resolution to approve the final plat for Evergreen Acres. Item 9, a resolution to approve the Evergreen Acres subdivision agreement.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 6 through 9 are today. Proponents, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, my name is Jeff Elliott, 17007 Marcy Street, here to represent the Iversons who are asking you to approve their final plat for one single-family residential lot. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving second to approve items 6 through 9, no lights, roll call.
Jerem, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Our items 6 through 9 are approved, 6 to 0. Item 10, an application to consider a class C liquor license for Emmett's Tavern located at 2514 Love North Street.
Public hearing agenda item number 10 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, my name is Mark McClewen. I live on 4815 Hickory Street, and I'm the one putting the bar in. So.
Answer any questions we might have. He had a question for you.
Alderman's doesn't keep you busy enough.
You could talk to my wife, haven't you? It's just a great opportunity to.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yeah, I know Mr. McClellan. He's a neighbor with his family to me in Morton Meadows, and he does a nice job at Alderman's and certainly not afraid of the challenge and applaud you for your investment in rehabilitating this building, this business, and going to be an asset to the neighborhood, I'm sure. So I make the motion approve.
Moving second to approve item 10, no further lights, roll call.
Jerem, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 10 is approved, 6 to 0. Item 11, an application to consider a class C liquor license for China Garden located at 8441 and 8443 West Center Road.
Public hearing agenda item number 11 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, my name, my name is Keye Jiang. This address 8441, 8443, West Center.
Thank you. And you just here to answer any questions we might have? Yes, sir. Yeah. Any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Vice President.
I know this isn't my district, but I eat at this place, so I have to ask you a couple of questions. Are you going to keep the hot pots?
Yeah, hot pot.
Going to keep the barbecue?
Yeah.
Keep the Szechuan menu?
Yes, Szechuan menu.
All right. I don't know how we can't continue to sport this thing.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second, roll call.
Jerem, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 11 is approved, 6 to 0.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item 12, an application to consider a class C liquor license for DNR Lounge located at 4024 North 24th Street.
Public hearing agenda item number 12 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, my name is December Jennings. I live at 6208 Whitmore Street, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Which is the, which building is it that you're going into on 20, is on 24th Street?
That old Fuzzy's.
The old Fuzzy's? Are you, we'll talk a little bit later because there's a, there's a business improvement district that we're trying to create there, and we would like for you to be aware of that.
Okay.
Okay? All right. Thank you. Second, roll call.
Jerem, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 12 is approved, 6 to 0. Item 13, an application to consider in addition to Tiny House to their class C liquor license located at 1411 South 13th Street to add an outdoor area approximately 32 feet by six, or 56 feet to the east.
Public hearing agenda item number 13 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. Sean Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue, here for the applicant and here for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving second to approve item 13, no lights, roll call.
Jerem, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 13 is approved, 6 to 0. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
Public hearings on agenda items numbers 14 through 22 were held on April 30, 2019. We are going to take item 16 off of consent. So the motion would be for 14, 15, 17 through 22. Roll call.
Jerem, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, 6 to 0.
Roll call.
Jerem, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Harding. Councilmember Harding passed due to a potential conflict of interest. Item 15 is approved, 5 to 0.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 23 through 35 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. And we are going to be taking item number 35 off of consent. So the motion would be for 23 through 34.
Public hearing.
Did you do the public?
I did the, oh, did we do that? I didn't do, oh. I did say if you come to the, if you come to the microphone, address.
You got to open it.
Oh, okay. Public hearing is, I didn't see anyone. So, public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Second, roll call.
23 to 34.
Second, roll call.
Jerem, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
23 through 34 are approved, 6 to 0. Item 35, a resolution to approve operating agreements for the implementation of a dockless shared scooter operation with Lime Inc. and Spin.
Public hearing agenda item number 35 is today. Proponents, please. Those in favor, proponents, please. And if you're here for one, if you're one of the vendors, too, we'd like for you to be here.
Derek Miller, good afternoon, members of the council, city planning staff. I just wanted to give a brief overview of where we got here, why we had the agreements before you today. Back in late 2017, early 2018, electric dockless scooters started showing up in many cities, some with permission and some without. And since the beginning of 2018, we were contacted by many vendors to come to Omaha because they saw Omaha as a viable market to provide this emerging micro-mobility option here in our community. Since then, we developed an internal staff team of public works, planning, law, parks, and OPD to take a look at the issue. We contacted probably over a dozen communities that are, that we're dealing with, the dockless scooter vendors in their communities, did a whole bunch of research. A lot of that research was put into that agreement that's before you today. And along the way, there was a bill introduced at the Unicameral, LB 665. Luckily, we were able to convince the Unicameral to put that on hold until we got our pilot underway and concluded to help inform that. We saw that bill as taking some control, local control, out of our hands. So they're going to put that on hold and they may reintroduce it next year. In the beginning, in the late January of this year, we released a request for proposals for vendors. Proposals were due in February. We received five, narrowed that list down to two that we felt met the qualifications of that RFP. And since February until really last week, negotiated the terms of those agreements. And since February until really last week, negotiated the terms of those agreements that are on the agenda today. After, after, if you approve this pilot, we'll go through the process of evaluating how this works in our community. At the end of the pilot program, and I spoke incorrectly this morning, but the pilot program will go through November 15th, but at the end of that, we'll develop a findings report, like other communities have, all the data, all the issues related to the pilot, make that available to all of you and others on how we felt the pilot went. And from there, we'll see what we want to do next, and we'll probably have a staff recommendation how we want to handle this in the future, if we want to regulate, how we want to regulate scooters in the future, and proceed with that. That's the background on it. Ken Smith is here to talk about management of the pilot program. If you have any questions in the background, I'd happy to, happy to answer any questions you may have on that.
Thank you. Ken?
It might be better. I think the representative from Lime is actually here, and he might be able to explain some of the rollouts and campaigns and from deployment standpoint, so. Chris, you want to step up?
Yeah, absolutely. Hello, everyone. My name is Chris Alborz. I am a city launcher for Lime. I will be taking the lead on the launch here in Omaha. I have already set up our operations. I have everything set to go to get our launch up and running this week. I'm here to answer any questions that you guys might have. I'll be happy to kind of go through the process on how to ride scooters, and then even kind of give you a rundown on how we run our operations to kind of give you guys a better idea, if that's how you guys would like me to start.
Sure.
Sure. So, Lime.
Address, address, please.
Address is, um. Our local address would be 8941 J Street. I think. Now, Lime is the largest micro-mobility company in the world right now. We're a little bit older than two years old, and in that amount of time, we've expanded to over 100 cities worldwide. We're on nine continents right now, excuse me, five continents right now, and over 20 countries. We offer a multitude of transportation options, but here in Omaha, we are only servicing our electric scooters, which is actually our most popular form of transportation. Everything for our scooters can be found through our app. You download our app in any of the Apple Play Stores, Apple Store, the Google Store, the Android Store, and then you'll put in your information in the app, you'll put in your payment information in the app, and the app will provide you a location of where our scooters are. You'll be able to go to those scooters, unlock them using our app. You'll scan a QR code that's on the handlebars, actually, that'll unlock the app for you. It's a dollar to unlock, and then there is a variable rate every minute after that for the city of Omaha. That rate is 29 cents per minute. The rider will then be able to take that scooter where they please, and they will park that scooter on the sidewalk. We actually do have instructions whenever they sign on, on the proper way to ride scooters, the safety measures behind riding scooters, and the proper way to park your scooters. Now, on the back end, our operations team will be out in full force on the streets of Omaha. We'll be monitoring these scooters, making sure that they are parked properly, that they're not blocking any sort of pedestrian right of way. We will also have a bit of people in the community known as juicers. You guys can imagine, we offer limes, you have to juice these limes. And juicers are part of the, what's known as the gig community. They're akin to Uber drivers. They will pick up these scooters at night, they'll take them home, charge them, and then drop them off in the morning. Again, everything is coordinated through the app. This way, we have people in the public that are involved, we have our operations team, which is locally sourced, and then we have a local mechanic team that they'll go through, and they will, their job is to make sure all of our scooters are in perfect working condition. Our operations team will be in the field testing these scooters, bringing anything that's broken back to the warehouse so it gets fixed immediately, and trying to run the most efficient operation where every rider is getting the best experience on the scooters every ride. Primarily, we're going to be rolling out 250 scooters by the end of the week. Our plan was to launch tomorrow, but due to the weather, I have suggested that we postpone our launch until Friday. And you'll be able to find our scooters mostly in the downtown area, the midtown crossing area, and then hopefully Benson. The cap for these scooters are 750, and we will be using the data that we derive, the frequency on the uses of scooters, to determine whether or not we will increase our cap here, or our limit of scooters here in the streets. We don't want to put too many scooters out when they're not being used, and then we want to make sure that we have enough scooters out to where they're servicing all the people that need them. So, from that, I'm open to any questions that you guys have. Be happy to explain anything.
The public works, and then I think we'll be open for any questions. Okay. Oh, Ken, you're just going to manage these?
Yeah.
Okay.
As, you know, these gentlemen alluded to, you know, this is fairly quick process that these scooters can.
Name an address for the record.
Thank you. I'm Ken Smith, Public Works Department. So, we're really cities, you find, in trying to catch up with this deployments of these scooters, and trying from a regulation standpoint. The pilot process is probably the best way to do this. We can get into the works of this, kind of figure out what's going on, what's happening with the data that's being derived from the systems. We also are doing a pilot program with our mobility provider, I'm sorry, our Passport, who is our mobile payment provider. Lime has already partnered with them to share that data within that dashboard. This dashboard will aggregate all the data from each of these entities and bring it into one place where the city can now start managing this from the standpoint, we can set up zones, and using parking requirements, basically parking 101, start charging for parking locations versus charging, where we typically see a cap and fee and a ride, charge for, you know, charges for the ride. So, it's a little bit different approach on how other cities have done this. And as Derek mentioned, we're also, at the end of this, we'll be able to use that data, put it into report, and bring it back to you for evaluation.
Thank you. Wouldn't do it during the questioning. Okay. Any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Hi, Scott Dobby, Executive Director of Omaha by Design, 618 South 11th. I'm here to express our support of the agreement and to applaud the city for the initiative in the, this proactive step towards encouraging broader multiple transportation modes in all their forms. As you know, technology is really starting to transform rapidly transportation in cities across the globe, and this is going to be no, no change. I think that it's wonderful how the city's getting out in front through this agreement in providing public oversight of issues like safety, rider education, community service, community engagement, equity, and the like. It supports the goals of the Smart Cities Partnership, and it harnesses data to help the city make better decisions in using our transportation infrastructure. Furthermore, we, we see great potential in the, these shared scooters is one small but really important piece of the puzzle in a total mobility solution, which, you know, ties back to the city's master plan goals. It'll enhance, you know, transportation through multiple options, promote the vibrancy and the livability of our neighborhoods, and better connect people to employment and education. So, I thank you and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard?
Luis Jimenez, 518 North 40th Street. I don't want to speak as an opponent. I want to make a comment to do with transportation in Omaha. I appreciate that this is an agreement the city is undertaking to help transportation, but my comment is that I just heard that this is going to help employment and possibly unemployment, unemployment. I'm not convinced by that. I look at the transportation in South Omaha, and it's lacking, and I just wish the city would come to an agreement of how to provide better busing to help employment. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is, um, I know Chris is here from Lime. Is there anyone from Spin that's here today?
I could not make it.
Okay. And I, I just, I kind of wondered a couple of things, and I know through the pilot program, but how do, and I'm sorry, Chris, if you could come up, I'd just ask a couple of quick questions. In other communities, how does it work with multiple vendors of, you know, placement of, of where they're parked and, you know, in the, at the beginning of the day and things of that nature?
Well, in the more popular. Yes, sir. Chris Alborz, Lime Scooters, and it's 8941 J Street. Now, in the other cities that I've been, for example, Dallas, Texas, we have, I think, five vendors in Dallas. Excuse me. And you'll see in the more popular intersections, the more popular real estate areas, multiple vendors will be kind of placed side by side. You'll see several Bird scooters, you'll see several Lime scooters. Now, there's only so much space on, you know, any four corners that these scooters can be on, so they really, you know, they can only be placed where, where there is space for them. A lot of times, you'll see scooters that are catty-cornered to them on the other side of the street. But, you know, the players, we all kind of, we play ball together, right? We're all in this for the same vision. We all want to change transportation in the long run, so we do have a good kind of playful mentality towards one another. Anytime.
You're also trying to make a profit, though, I assume.
Yes, absolutely. That is a, something that everyone is working on right now.
So, is the pricing then similar from Lime to Bird to Spin to, in this case, it's only Spin and Lime, but?
You know, I am not sure on what Spin is offering in terms of their packages. I know Spin has a few different programs from the other cities that I've worked in, so I'm not sure what they're offering here in Omaha, but they're, they're very similar. They might vary from city to city, company to company. This is a relatively, I'm kind of at a loss for words here. We, we all generally have a standard that we operate at, whatever the variable cost is.
Okay. And so, the placement of the scooters in the morning, for example, that's kind of first come, first served? Is that kind of how that works?
Yes, most likely. Now, there is, there's plenty of space here in Omaha, and we're only bringing 240, 50 scooters to start with. Not sure how much Spin is bringing, but there is enough real estate to really spread that out.
Okay.
And not overcrowd one area or another.
All right. Talk a little bit about the, the safety, both for the rider and, and I guess, potential conflicts with, with other vehicular traffic and pedestrians.
Yes. So, the wonderful thing about scooters are that they bring awareness to the side of the streets. They bring awareness to where cyclists would normally be riding. They really add to the safety effect of that. For now, the drivers, they're not only looking out for bicyclists, but now they're also looking out for people on scooters. And people on scooters are a lot more visible to see, as just our data has shown us throughout time. These bright colored scooters, they're usually people kind of running in hordes. They, they just bring more attention to the, the side of the road. We always encourage our riders to ride in the bike lanes when available. If there are no bike lanes, to ride on the shoulders of the streets, and to never ride on the sidewalks to avoid pedestrians. Our app has a very good kind of play-by-play on how to ride safely, on how to avoid going downhill, how to avoid riding without a helmet, always to bring a helmet with you. We have a very intensive kind of a terms and conditions, and then we also put on educational programs, where I know we're teaming up with Omaha by Design on May 23rd to put on a mobility event, where we'll be handing out helmets to the public and teaching them on how to ride safely, on where to ride, and to be conscious of other people on the roads.
Okay. Just one final comment, I guess, too. Be careful when you plan on putting these out. Just because we approve it or not today, doesn't mean that you can put them out. It still has to have the signature at the mayor's office as well, and have a valid contract. So, make sure you have all those Ts crossed and Is dotted before you put anything out.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Just to follow, a few follow-up questions for you, too. I think like all of us have experienced these in other cities. In my case in particular, it was Lime in Santa Monica.
Fantastic.
I just checked, and I saw your app on my phone.
Great.
So, it was well done there, and it is fun, and I think it adds to an urban, urban fabric of a city to have these. So, those would be the pros of some of the aspects of having scooters in a city. I think it does help with transit as well. Some of the cons, though, can be how it interacts with motorists or pedestrians and liability issues, and certainly the clutter, and maybe the clutter is one of my bigger concerns here. So, I want to talk about that a little bit with a few questions, and then just talk a little bit more about how these will operate under this pilot program, because I think a huge part of this is educating the public about what the proposition is and how they can be used or not used, and, and what enforcement mechanisms are if they have a concern. So, I'm also pleased to see that Omaha by Design is engaged and will help with some of those sessions coming up, it sounds like. So, maybe what I'll start with is kind of fleshing out what the agreement says about the restricted areas. I believe it's accurate to say during this pilot project, they wouldn't operate near the riverfront or the Mecca lots or Leahy Mall. In fact, those, those have been geofenced, right?
That's correct. There is in fact a geofence that makes it impossible for people to go and park the scooters in those areas, making it, you know, improbable for them to, to go into those areas.
And for those that are not, aren't familiar with that technology, the scooter literally stops working if you went, went into one of those areas, right?
So, no, the scooter does not stop working when you go into one of those areas. There are some safety issues involved with stopping a scooter without kind of a warning to the rider itself. Now, what'll happen is the rider, the way that the scooters work, you unlock it, charges you $1, and then you get charged every minute for the scooter that's unlocked. And you'll get charged that until you lock the scooter back up. So, scooters that enter these no park, no service zones, they will be unable, you won't be able to lock them. So, these people are going to be continuously getting charged, this, you know, a variable rate, until they remove the scooter from that area and then park it in an inappropriate area. Now, we will have local operations on the ground monitoring these no-ride areas to make sure that people aren't leaving scooters there locked, or in some instances, people will take locked scooters from appropriate areas and then leave them in the, you know, they'll actually move them in their truck and put them in these no-ride, no-park zones. So, we will have crews and local staff on the ground making sure that these places are kept safe and kept avoided of scooters.
Okay. I'll just point out, that's a little bit different than what we heard this morning in our briefing in terms of where they would and would not operate in those areas. So, what you just said was, one could actually ride one into that area, but if you left it there, you'd still be getting charged, and obviously, no one would want to do that. But, until you leave that area, I mean, like, one could ride into those areas where you're not supposed to ride under this agreement.
That, that is correct. One can go into one of those areas that would be geofenced, but they wouldn't be able to stay there. They would have to leave in order to complete the ride.
Okay. So, Derek, can you come in on that a little bit, too? I think that was different than what we heard this morning. than what we heard this morning. Is that your understanding as well?
Yeah, we, I, I think that used to be the case where the geofence would shut down the scooter. But, as, as you stated, I think there are some safety issues if you're riding a scooter and you're not understanding that you're crossing an area you're not supposed to and it shut off completely from fifty miles an hour to zero might be problematic. So, that is the case where you're going to get, continue to get charged until you leave that area and then you can, and you can lock, re-lock it and then end your session with the scooter.
So, I understand that argument about you can't go from, you know, thirty-five to zero and have that be a problem for riders. But, I think that also does leave the door open a bit to these off-limits areas we've designated. I don't know how folks would know that unless there is a heavy education about those areas. And even then, I, I think there are probably some concern about that's still happening, right? Because...
Right. And I think in, in the app itself, it has designated areas that are restricted, the restricted areas. So, that education is part of the app.
I could add one thing. There is, once you open the ad, once you open the ad and you look at the map, oh, Chris Albor's Lime scooters, eighty-nine forty-one J Street. Once you do open the app and look at the map, there is a red zone in these geofenced areas. And then, once you ride into these areas, you will receive a message on your phone that says, you know, please, please leave, please remove yourself. And to kind of give you guys a little insight, our next model of scooters that would be out this summer, they will actually flash a warning on the scooters once you enter into these no-park zones to make the rider aware at that point that they have entered into that zone. And then, the scooter will then tell them to, to leave. So, the, the technology behind giving the, the rider awareness, we, we've developed it and it's out. It's, it'll soon hit the streets. The models that we have now, to be completely transparent, the only way that we can educate the rider at that point is through a text message. It'd be through the app. Their phone would be getting, you know, buzzed constantly.
Okay. And then, other specifications in the agreement are that you can't ride on sidewalks, as was mentioned, for pedestrian safety. You can ride on streets, but only streets that are thirty-five miles per hour or less, right?
That's correct.
And so, I don't, I doubt many people know exactly what streets are thirty-five miles an hour or less, but that's something that folks are going to have to pay attention to.
Yes. Now, for the, the initial rollout, the areas that I am dropping the scooters are all going to be in, you know, generally the downtown area where the speed limit is under thirty-five miles per hour. So, it would be a little bit of a journey for people to leave these areas and then ride out onto these major streets. So, I don't foresee that being an issue, you know, off of that. But, if that does arise, we would have some strategies to, to counteract that. We would make those streets specifically, we would be able to bring some sort of messaging into the app to make the rider aware that they're entering into a street that's forty miles per hour. And then, we could even send them a message after their trip, letting them know that they, you know, went into a street that was geofenced as an area that they're not supposed to ride in. And then, to inform them at that point that they should not, you know, redo that, that trip.
Okay. And can you repeat the areas you talked about you're targeting to start with?
Yes. Benson, Midtown Crossing, and the downtown area, just generally.
And when you say downtown, like everywhere or Old Market?
We will not be in the Old Market, per se, just for, just because of the layout over there. I believe we got that emailed this morning. But, we will be over by the stadiums, not on the stadiums, but in that general area.
Okay. And then, let's talk about just the, the potential issue of clutter again. So, I understand the juicer concept and I think that does work in most cases. There otherwise will be, you know, parked stands, let's call them, where they'll be set up in the mornings. Is that correct?
Yeah. So, there's not an actual stand that'll be there. Our juicers will know, there'll be pictures for them to have it. We usually just use the dead spaces on the sidewalks to stage our scooters. Now, for, for the issue of clutter, we're, we like to pride ourselves in being a data-driven company. And the data that provides, you know, if we have too many scooters in one area and they're not being used, then we're going to reposition those scooters to where they're actually in areas that are being used. So, any scooter that's sitting out for more than, say, twelve hours, twenty-four hours, that we're going to actually move those ourselves and put them in areas that they will actually see usage. So, we should never be able to see a, a clutter unless there is some sort of event where a lot of people had, you know, they all got on scooters from around town and they all rode to one area. And in those situations, we would use our ops to go in and what we dubbed as rebalance those scooters, where we take them from the area that they got moved to and then drop them back off to their little hotspots.
Okay. And then, talk about liability for a sec, for a second, too, and how it's worked in the other communities.
Sure.
So, the way I understand it from our briefing this morning is that the city is not liable and the company helps not hold us liable for situations that were foreseeable. And also, a rider, when they're riding, has to sign a waiver essentially when they're about to get on, that they understand the risks of riding a, riding a scooter and are not required to wear a helmet, right?
They are required to wear a helmet, yes.
They are?
As part of our terms of agreements, that's correct.
Okay. Do many people actually do that?
You know, to be, to be, again, transparent with you, when we first launched, it is a little difficult to convey that message. You know, I believe it's, it's almost a, an image that people have in their heads of whenever they see these scooters, they're just riding them for fun and they don't have helmets with them, or that they don't see scooters being a form of transportation that requires helmets to be ridden. So, that part of education and almost a culture shift is where we team up with other vendors in the company, nonprofits like Omaha By Design, to get that message out, to get as many free helmets out as possible. I know Spin hands out free helmets. We give out as many free helmets as we can. And then, that way, we just try to kind of shift and change the, the culture around scooter riding to where people are, when they leave the house, they know they're going to take a scooter to work, they're going to, you know, take a helmet with them. Or, if they're taking a scooter to class, they're going to make sure they take a helmet with them. Then, people who are going out for fun, we sometimes have set up some agreements with local businesses who become our Lime partners. And then, they will have helmets at their locations where tourists, at popular tourist destinations where people can go in. And then, they'll purchase something at that local business and then, in return, they'll get a free helmet with that. And then, they can use that helmet for rides. We, we have employed tactics like that in the past.
Okay. I would just note, where I was riding these, I didn't see a single person with a helmet.
Yeah, in Santa Monica, which is surprising. The community over there has really taken two scooters. I, I bet if you go back, you, you would find at least a handful of people riding with helmets now.
And in any event, there's nobody really enforcing that. But, but from a liability perspective, I mean, it's their responsibility when they, when they sign, they're going to ride and they, and they sign that waiver.
That's right.
To either do that or not do that, and that's on them. But, it does not reflect liability on the city in that, in that instance either, does it?
I, I don't believe so. That's correct. I, I would like to defer that question to Lime's legal team, as I'm not the expert on that, per se.
Okay.
But, if you want to come in and have a word.
Maybe I'll ask Mr. Kratz. I think, I think he's familiar with how that might work here.
Paul Klett, City Attorney. I didn't quite hear all of your question, but the liability to the city is very limited. Any obstructions on the road or actions, accidents on the road by state law, the city's not responsible for, for those type of situations. Also, the indemnity clause in here in the contract states that the city's not liable. Before the city's liable, there has to be willful misconduct or negligence, which is a fairly high standard to set. So, we feel comfortable that the liability to the city will be minimal, if, if nonexistent.
Okay. I'll yield the floor here in a second for others that I think probably have questions. But, I think it is important to walk through these details and how it works so folks know and know what to expect as soon as Friday in these areas. I do prefer seeing these in communities that have better bike and pedestrian infrastructure.
Absolutely.
And I wish we did. And that's a goal of mine, to improve. And maybe this will help in that respect.
Yes. That's actually something that we pride ourselves over, that we work with cities to give them the data that they need to make decisions on bike infrastructure and more bike lanes, guided bike lanes and things like that. And we also like to empower nonprofit groups that work in the community to build those nonprofits. We just recently named Omaha By Design our Lime Hero. So, any, let's say you, you take a Lime ride and it only costs you a dollar forty-three cents, we'll round that up to two dollars and then the rest of that will go into charity if you opt into our Lime Hero program. And that charity we had just decided would be Lime, Omaha By Design. So, we, we do like to empower local groups to help revitalize cities for their bike infrastructure. And we also like to work with cities to revitalize their bike infrastructure.
And we do appreciate, appreciate you working with us, because as was noted earlier, in many communities, these have just come and they can come and they're, all of a sudden, they're there. I know that you are a patient with us to try and build an international regulatory structure around this so that it can work well for everybody, hopefully. And I think it's important that, or, or, you know, appropriate that we're taking a baby step here with a seven-month pilot project to see how this goes and collect that data. And it may be at the end of, at the pilot project, everything ran perfectly and we keep it going as it was. Or, it may be we don't. Or, it may be certain areas have problems with, with it more than others and want to be excluded. And that can be accomplished as well, is my understanding. So, that, that's something I'll be paying attention to as well, especially as applies to my district and my, and my neighborhoods that I think are probably high on the list for participation in this, it sounds like. Last question is, should folks have concerns or questions about a scooter that's in a street over thirty-five miles per hour, or somebody riding without a helmet, or the potential clutter, or wants to comment on somebody doing, riding really well? Who would they, who would they contact? Is there a contact number? Or, where, where would complaints or concerns be steered towards?
That, that is a wonderful question. On each one of our scooters, we will have a number and email address that people can go to to either file their complaints or have any sort of questions like that. We also have a help option in app. So, if they download our app and they go to the help portion of it, that'll reach them with a customer service representative. And then, any complaints they have will be cited to the city of Omaha and that'll be sent directly to me. So, then I and my team will be able to direct their question and answer that efficiently.
So, answered and filled by Lime and, and, I'm sorry, the other company's name I just lost. Not the city of Omaha, is that correct?
That's correct, yes. I, I believe that's, I, I don't think there's a three-one-three put in place here in Omaha. I believe it would go directly to, to Lime.
Okay. All right. I'll yield the floor for now.
Thank you. Mr. Vice President.
Yes. As the council member for the district where these things are going to primarily launch in downtown and midtown, I just want to prepare the public for what you are about to see. For those of you who watch the mayhem commercials on TV, what I have seen in Indianapolis, Kansas City, and in Denver are metropolitan cities that have been overrun with these things. They're not controlled through geofencing. They're dropped off and go wherever the rider pleases. They block doors to businesses. They create hazards for pedestrians and for people on the sidewalks. They ride down the middle of the roads. There's nothing that requires the scooter's operator to do anything. And despite the best intentions of the city and Lime to work with the city, and I applaud you for that, I just want to prepare people for what I have seen where the scooters are already operating in metropolitan areas like the downtown Omaha area. When you get into Blackstone, you don't even have sidewalks that are as wide as this dais that I'm sitting at. And you're going to have people who are trying to go to businesses who are going to be dealing with Uber drivers, buses, vehicles, pedestrians. You're going to have people on roads that carry large volumes of traffic that are going to be weaving in and about them, that I've seen in other cities. And so, while I'm one of the biggest champions of transportation alternatives in this city, I am very skeptical about what the city's about to be inundated with. And I want the public, by hearing what I just heard, to go into this wide open with their eyes wide open. Because not only have I been to these cities and seen them, I've been there on business, I've been to the pleasure, I've been with colleagues in other cities professionally, socially, and not one of them has said anything positive about what they've experienced in the downtown areas. Now, when my two daughters were small, they're now twenty-five and twenty-two, they were the ultimate razor scooter operators. They were really good, way better than their old man was. And they wore helmets and they knew how to brake them. But, when, when the sun sets and these things are on the road and people don't know how to brake and they're not wearing helmets, it's Katie bar the door for safety. Because there's all sorts of hazards that come up and you can't eliminate the hazards in all cases. And these things, when you're not wearing a helmet and you're traversing the streets of Omaha, which by the way, I don't know if Mr. Stube's here, but approximately how many potholes has the city repaired this year? Plus or minus five thousand?
Bob Stube probably works. More than five thousand.
Plus or minus ten thousand?
Um...
Am I warming up, getting closer?
Yeah, you're probably getting pretty close.
I think the point is, when you live and, and have a city located in the northern hemisphere that uses a lot of salt in the winter with freeze-thaw cycles, the conditions on the roadway are always, always, in the absence of a brand-new resurfaced or, or re-pannelled street, less than desirable. And in this city, our roads are not like you find in Phoenix or Santa Monica. And so, people weave about to avoid hazards.
Sure.
And I'm a big bicyclist. And I know what it's like. I've learned all kinds of new words when I'm on my bike and I'm on the street from people who are driving by.
I understand.
I'm sure you've experienced similar, the way you're smiling. So, it's going to create incidents where people who are operating cars, in some cases, let the emotions get the best of them because they're not patient, or they see if somebody weaving about in front of them is operating unsafely. And I'm not telling you anything yet I haven't seen in other cities. So, please, as though, I, I mean, I love Limes, squeeze them into popular adult beverages. My wife's favorite pie is key lime pie. So, I'm a Lime fan, speaking metaphorically. But, if the people of Omaha are not prepared for what they are about to see, it's going to contribute to frustration, it's going to contribute to the anxiety, and it's going to create headaches for us. And by the way, when they go to call that number, I don't know what your experience is. I hope Lime is better. But, any app I've tried to call the customer service number on, if you can find it, you're lucky to get through to anybody. And I know you want your riders, at least your scooters, to be responsible and to obey the, the terms and conditions under every app that you scroll down to where you can't, it won't accept your payment till you hit accept. Nobody ever reads those because they're so long, there's so many conditions. So, in, with the average rider, what I see happening and why there are no helmets in the cities that I've been to on the scooter operators is because people really don't read those terms and conditions. Or, if they do, they start out and they get exhausted a few minutes into it. So, if you're a member of the public and you're calling expecting realistically to have that what you just observed as a condition that you believe was either unsafe or not respectful to the rules of where these things should be or not be, don't expect immediate response. Because the way I see this set up is the fingers crossed, pointing at each other from the public works people, the Lime people, the police. Do you know what our response time is if your car gets broken into on a Friday night?
I do not.
You call it in and a lot of, they prioritize the calls. So, it's not uncommon for our police on the lower priority calls, like I just mentioned, to say, it'll be between two hours and two days before we get to you. So, can you imagine people calling nine-one-one on the scooters if the police can't respond quickly to the priority calls higher in the order because they're busy handling the most important calls? So, that's another thing I want people to go into this with eyes wide open. Don't expect, when you see something going on that shouldn't be going on, that it's going to be addressed immediately. This is going to be a pilot project that we're going to learn a lot from between the day after the mayor signs your agreement, when you're then authorized to put the scooters on the street.
That's right.
And the end of the experiment in November. And then, then we have very talented, capable people who are going to study what happened. So, a lot of what I hope the study includes is our community's shared experience and the learning curve that comes about as these scooters are unleashed on the city. Because there isn't docking stations, like there are some places, that require scooters to be put in one place or checked out for some, someplace else. And, and there's, as I see it, a lot of wiggle room, even in the answers between this morning's briefing and this afternoon's briefing. So, I, I am going to support the mayor's pilot project on this. I just take us down this road of what to expect when expecting scooters, because it's about to happen. And I don't want anyone to be surprised or to say, wow, if we had known this was going to happen, why did you ever do it? I'm inclined to vote for this because if we don't have this measured approach, then what you and your companies have shown in other places is they just descend upon the city in a totally unregulated area. Now, maybe Lime isn't like some of the others, but that has happened in places like no regulation San Diego, I'm told, where there's mayhem is an understatement. But, I want to really make sure that we, in our staff, the police, and the public works, have your personal contact information so they, they can get ahold of you, that as the manager in charge of the introduction of the fleet to Omaha, that if you're not going to be here for the duration, that whoever your successor is and the person highest on the Lime ladder of managerial responsibility provides their contact information to the, to the city. Because... Because I have a feeling your phone's going to be busy for a while if what happens here has been what I have seen happen elsewhere. So while I wish you the best of luck, and again, thank your company for the spirit that you've worked with your legal team, with our people, to have some basic parameters, please understand this is going to be an interesting ride for the next few months.
Thank you. Councilmember Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. I actually had a couple more questions that came up as a result of some of the questions and comments that I've heard. I got to say that at the outset, I'm a little disappointed to hear something today at 3:30 that I think all along we've been led to believe otherwise, and that is that the geofencing, that when these scooters would go into those areas, that they would be, they would no longer be able to proceed. And now I'm being told that they can enter these areas and they could drive around these areas, you just can't park them there because the clock keeps running on it on your app until you take it out of there and park it outside of those areas. So I just want to be clear, is that, is my understanding now correct that you can drive them in these areas that have been hashed out on the exhibit in the contract?
Yes, sir, your understanding is very clear. The fact that you can't park these scooters in those areas, but you can enter those areas with the scooters, ride around and leave, that is correct. We have not, in any city, ever actually stopped the use of someone's scooters when entering into a no-park zone or a no-circuit zone. We are testing out certain strategies of slowing the scooters down in these areas, but those are still in testing phases. There is nothing that we have in place right now that would be able to prevent a rider from entering an area. And that is for safety reasons that we have that set in place.
I guess I kind of understand the safety concern about that, but I do know that, you know, when I'm riding the bumper cars with my kids at the amusement park and the time runs out, the bumper car doesn't just stop. I mean, it kind of slides out, and you would think that, my understanding was that when they entered these areas, that's pretty much what happened, is that the power cuts on them and it just glides out. But that's not what I'm being told now.
Yes, sir. I am very sorry for the misunderstanding there, but that's never been our ability. We don't have that capability at this point.
But it sounds like there's something you're working on in that regard.
To, yes, to slow down these scooters once they do enter these areas. Now, that's nothing that we can put in place tomorrow, per se, but that is something that we are working on. I do want to highlight that these scooters have, they've been around for a little over a year, and in most cases, they've, no cities actually have these scooters for an entire year yet. This is very new technology still. And since the birth of these scooters, we have eight different reiterations of the scooter models come out. We are constantly working on our hardware to bring the safest scooters to our cities, and we're constantly working on our technology to advance it so that it is safe for riders and it's conducive to city regulators whenever we're kind of discussing whether or not people can ride in these no-park zones or enter these no-park zones.
Are these identifiable uniquely in any way?
Could you expand on that?
Sure. Is there a license plate, for example?
Yes, absolutely. There is a code on each scooter. As I mentioned in my opening statement, whenever you unlock a scooter, you scan the QR code, and there is actual numbers and letters placed right there.
But not, probably not large enough or visible enough to...
Like a pass or buy?
Yeah.
No, no, sir.
Okay. So if someone wanted to report someone who is driving erratically or on the sidewalks or, there's no way really to report that?
There, I mean, you can absolutely report bad behavior, bad scooter riding, and if you were able to pinpoint the time and location, we can dig back into the data and try to pull up that from the rider, and then we can actually contact that rider and let them know about their, the warnings that have been put in place. I can't say that that is something that is used often.
So I too will be supportive of the pilot program, but I think these two issues, those are two of the issues I would think that should be vetted or at least studied a little more during this time period, that being, you know, the ability to limit access to certain areas. I'm sure that, I know the technology exists to do that and to be done in a safe manner so that doesn't, it doesn't put in jeopardy both the rider or the operator or any pedestrians or other vehicular traffic that might be surrounding it at the time. I would also think that to have some identifiable marking on there so that people have the ability, much as you would have today with, I guess you don't have it on bikes, but with other cars. One other question I'd have, and I, thank you, Chris, I guess I'd have a question maybe for Derek or it might be Law. But if I have a private scooter, would I be required to, what are my limitations with a private motorized scooter? I guess I'll ask Paul. Can I go anywhere I want? Does it need to be licensed? Does it need...
Paul Kratz, City Attorney. That's a good question. Without an agreement with the city, as we're doing in this resolution, scooters, I believe, are not allowed on streets. So it has to be specifically authorized by the city, and that's what we're doing here. So I think your private scooter probably would not be allowed on the street.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I have some good tips.
And I think we've heard pretty much what everybody's thinking up here. Obviously, because of the 46 pages that I read through on the information I already received, we didn't hear about these particular areas that we wouldn't be able to go into the, or we thought we, you know, they would kind of slow down the e-scooters, these no areas. But when I first looked at this map and I seen these particular areas that you weren't supposed to ride into, the first thing I thought was, oh my gosh, this is where everybody's going to want to ride. I mean, the ballpark, CHI Center, downtown. Obviously, Genoa E-Malls fenced off. I hope nobody rides in there right now. That probably wouldn't be real fun. But so when you get thrown that little bit of a curveball where you hear, well, we can't just stop them, it kind of makes sense because you'd probably have to have something in the ground around there that's warning you, hey, this thing's going to slow down or, you know, stop shortly. But in these areas that are designed for the no eater, no e-scooter riding, will there be signs? Can anybody answer? Will there be signs maybe on the corners or the boundaries of this? Or are we just supposed to assume that somebody with a credit card who's of age that has some extra money on it is going to swipe their card and quickly go to the bottom and hit "I agree" and know they're not supposed to ride there?
Right. Now, the notifications will pop up on their phone once they enter those areas, and then I did mention that our next iteration of scooter, they will actually be alerted from the scooter that they've entered into those zones.
We know if you're riding a scooter, hopefully your phone is in your pocket.
That's right.
Okay, so we'll forget about that, and hopefully we get these new ones that will flash. But in the meantime, do we know from the city? Can anybody answer me? Will there be signs in these areas where we're not supposed to ride to at least let people know? Because I'll tell you where I'm going with this in a second.
We hadn't talked about using signage in those areas, but it's something that we can certainly consider.
Okay. We're probably going to need to. And Chris, if I could go back to you, please, about, and I only bring this up because the last hour and a half, we heard about unnecessary costs, and maybe we didn't know, or we, you know, this is the way it is. Did you say or did you not say that if you ride in these areas, you will be charged extra?
You wouldn't be charged extra. It would be the normal rate that you're getting charged until you, the only way you can end your ride is by leaving these areas, and that's when the charge will stop. So you'll be, continue to be charged until you leave this area and lock your scooter properly.
Okay. So not any extra, just the normal?
That's correct.
Charge. Okay. Well, I mean, obviously, I'm a big transportation fan. I'm not going to sit here and pretend I'm not, and obviously, I'm excited that we're bringing, like you heard already, another piece of the puzzle into the city, although a very small piece. I think it's going to be fun for some. I think it's going to be very challenging for others. There is one thing that with somebody coming up with a map, and maybe this is for Law because of the, and maybe it's not so much this is a city right of way, but if we're entering this agreement on this pilot program, Mr. Kratz, in these designated no-riding areas, if somebody were to, would the city be on the hook anymore if an occurrence or an accident happened inside these zoned areas?
Paul Kratz, City Attorney. No, we would not be on the hook, so to speak, any more than any other area.
Okay. That's good to hear, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pauls. Pass. Mr. Vice President.
Yeah, I forgot to ask Mr. Smith. Thank you, Chris, for your time. Ken? One of the things I think you've shared with me is the experience that Charlotte and Detroit have had in terms of implementing a system where the geofence, whether it's called that or some other term to describe an event where a rider enters a no-zone, akin to if you're, you've rented a car at the airport and either you're going through the tolls and you get billed later as the renter, or you leave your car and get a parking ticket and don't pay it, then they know who rented the car and they pass it along. You told me about a system that you were acquiring that would, in theory, allow the city to impose the fine, which would be then on the vendor, whether Lime or Spin, and then they would pass it back to the rider. And you shared with me this morning and the council members in the pre-meeting that you don't expect to have that system operational day one of the pilot. I'd like to know if, in fact, you do intend to have that system operational at any time during the pilot, and if so, when?
Ken Smith, Public Works. So the, there's a second pilot that's with the dashboard that we're going to implement. That is to be available roughly around June 1st. We'll be able to get our hands on that. Before that, we'll have some access to it, but be limited until they work out the agreements with Lime and Spin. I know they've had that agreement with Lime right now. They're working on it with Spin. And in that dashboard, you can create zones that introduces this auto-enforcement. So for example, these restricted geofenced areas, if they were to go into them, there could be a fine structure that could be pushed out onto that scooter or that user. So that is something, as indicated, this is, really, no cities really had this very long. It's all new. We're just trying to stay out ahead of it and do the best we can to manage it through these systems that are just up and coming.
So translated, if what I heard you say is there's no requirement that that system be operational during the pilot, but you hope that there will be in a second pilot?
Yeah. June 1st is what they're shooting for a date right now.
Thank you. That's all I have.
That's all you have? Public hearing is closed. There are no more lights. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
I know. Moved and seconded to approve item number 35. No further lights. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 35 is approved, six to zero. Item 36, an ordinance loving a special tax and assessment on lots and pieces of real estate within the Benson Business Improvement District, number 6875. Group number 6875-16 is amendment of the whole requested by the Parks Department.
Is there a motion?
Motion for the amendment of the whole.
Second. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding.
I apologize. We're on 36.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Harding. Councilmember Harding passed due to a potential conflict of interest. Item 36 is amended at the whole, five to zero. Item 37, an ordinance loving a special tax and assessment on lots and pieces of real estate within the Benson Business Improvement District, number 6875. Group number 6875-17 is amendment of the whole requested by the Parks Department.
Motion for the amendment of the whole.
Second. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Harding. Councilmember Harding passed due to a potential conflict of interest. Item 37, amended of the whole, is approved, five to zero. Item 38, an ordinance loving a special tax and assessment on lots and pieces of real estate within the Blackstone Business Improvement District, number 6877. Group number 6877-17 is amendment of the whole requested by the Parks Department.
Move to approve 38A.
Second. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 39, an ordinance to approve the 10th Amendment to the redevelopment agreement with the Durham Museum in the amount of $100,000 is amendment of the whole requested by the Finance Department.
Move 40A.
Second. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 40, an ordinance to approve the 10th Amendment to the redevelopment agreement with the Durham Museum in the amount of $100,000 is amendment of the whole requested by the Finance Department.
Move 40A.
Second. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item 41, an ordinance approving a contract with Nifty Clean LLC for janitorial services at traffic maintenance with an annual estimated cost of $8,978 from May 1st, 2019 through April 30th, 2022.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 41 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 42, an ordinance approving a contract with Fisher Building Services, Inc., in the amount of $864,529.75 for OPW 53518 for the 2019 parking facility repair project.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 42 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
One public hearing will be held for items 43 to 47 for agreements for stabilized sewage sludge for an agreement period ending December 31st, 2022 with Robert Wilkins &amp; Sons, Inc., Patrick Grease, Norlinger Farms, James Ingersson, and Cody Knapp.
This is 43 to 47. Public hearing on agenda, items numbers 43 through 47 are today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Festerson.
I know we didn't talk about this this morning, but I thought I'd just engage Mr. Stube just for a second on these items because I don't think it's well-known how we are handling the sludge from our wastewater treatment plants. And as long as we're having this broader conversation about waste hauling and waste reduction and plastic bags and recycling, I think it's worthwhile just to talk about how Public Works does handle this and how it has been used in a second use rather than just disposed of or sent to the landfill in a productive way. Would you mind giving us just a short summary of that, Mr. Stube?
Bob Stube, Public Works. So, yes, at both of the treatment facilities, the Missouri River Treatment Plan and the Papillion Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant, so essentially, the biosolids are the last product essentially after it goes through full treatment. That falls under state law, and we are allowed, under state law, to work with farmers to essentially utilize that particular material as an amendment to their farms. And so it's something that the city has been doing for many, many years. It became a situation where incineration was not a viable alternative. This is something that we've been doing, and it's a very, very cost-effective program for the city of Omaha.
Yeah, so in essence, the farmers can pick up the sludge and it gets spread to their properties, and they can use it for fertilizer rather than just it just being disposed of or having it be an extra cost to citizens, right?
Yeah, it's essentially what we do is we transport to these particular farms that we have agreements with, and then they're the ones that actually store the materials and then apply it to their properties when they deem necessary.
Thanks. I do think it's a productive arrangement for everyone involved, and just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Next item.
Item 48, an ordinance to amend ordinance number 40992 for Street Improvement District, number 6878, improving north 89th Circle from Burt Street north to the end of the cul-de-sac to amend such district to become road maintenance to amend such district to become Road Maintenance District, number 2019-04, to change the type of improvement to asphalt overlay. A is communication and support, B is communication opposition.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 48 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, President, council members. My name is Scott Jockham, 2120 South 72nd Street, Croker Huck Law Firm. I'm an attorney representing Timothy DeGeorge, and he owns 810 and 830 North 89th Circle. This is the cul-de-sac that's just north of Burt Street on 89th. This issue, we discussed a bit this morning at the pre-council meeting, and I have to answer any questions. My understanding is that this ordinance, this amendment from a street improvement district to a road maintenance district was initiated by Mr. Alan Thielen in the context of a pending case, in which that was proposed as a resolution to those points. We did submit and sign, and they say "we," Mr. DeGeorge, who has 44% of the frontage footage of this particular street, in addition to other property owners, signed a majority, 62%, petition to amend from a street improvement district to a road maintenance district here. And I'm happy to answer any questions any of you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Jockham. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? If you could all kind of line up, and as you come up, tell us your name, your address, and the basis for your opposition, please.
Okay. My name is David DiMarco. My address is 909 North 89th Circle, and I am the owner with less than 4% of the frontage in Stonham Estates. For the record, my home sits on half of an acre of land, but the way the property is shaped, it's like a pizza slice with the tip bitten off. So, as a result, I don't have very much frontage, but I have a spectacular backyard for my dogs and my wife. Despite only having less than 4% of the frontage, I deal with a greater-than-average share of the drainage of the neighborhood that comes from down the street and from the houses on the west side. When I bought the house, I asked my realtor about the drainage problems, and he said, "Don't worry, this isn't a street improvement district, and they will be installing storm drains, concrete, et cetera." Great, I signed the papers. Well, as they say, the best-laid plans of mice and city planners off go agle, and here we are. I sympathize with my neighbor Tim after seeing how much property and trees he would ultimately give up compared to what was initially proposed by the city. We did sit down over coffee a few weeks ago and hash things out, I thought. Earlier, I had even signed a letter, I believe the whole neighborhood did, expressing our concerns about the widening of the street and seeing what could be done that was less invasive. So, I was surprised when I found out that the city had settled Tim's lawsuit by simply agreeing to amend the SID to an RMD, which quoting various city planners and engineers would dump water on 909 North 89th Circle and substantially increase drainage issues on the DiMarco property. I was under the impression that once an SID was created, it could not be uncreated. And apparently, so was the city, because I have emails stating that very fact from Heather Tibby Pierce, among others. I was also under the impression that you couldn't settle a lawsuit without talking to all affected parties. I never got a phone call, an email, anything. Thankfully, I already had legal representation, so we were able to get the ball rolling to protect my property. I suggested a possible solution to Alan Thielen that involved those in favor of the RMD paying for all of it, and he said he couldn't do that because he would need their permission. Where was this sort of thinking when he was signing my property away? Before I bought my house, the previous owners were sued by a home behind them when flooding occurred. Because of this, my house has a spillway system, a cistern with multiple drains to redistribute water, and French drains in the driveway. My concerns echoed by the city's engineers is that by going forward with the RMD as it is, the water will overwhelm my drainage system and potentially damage my house and perhaps the house behind me. It has happened before. The misconception of all this is that I demand the SID as it is and all the torn-up trees and excessive costs that come with it. This is the farthest from the truth. What I am looking for is the ability to renegotiate the terms of the settlement with terms that will consider the views of the property, of my property, and the other homeowners on the east side of the street. We had a meeting and discussed possible solutions that all involve sticking with the RMD, but any attempts to alter the settlement have been met with pushback from Scott Jockham. So, please let me get back to the negotiating table. Don't just force this RMD down my throat without at least giving me a chance to protect my property. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. DiMarco. Any relation to Peter?
Yes, he's my uncle.
All right.
He's pretty good.
Next opponent, please.
Good afternoon. Erin Robach, 114 West Stodge Road. I am an attorney with McGill Gottsneider Law Firm here in Omaha, and I represent Mr. DiMarco and his wife, Michelle Maher.
Welcome.
Thank you. I just want to kind of go through a little bit of the history of this street improvement district, which we've had to learn after the fact, because Mr. DiMarco didn't purchase his property until 2017. So, at the time that Mr. DiMarco purchased his property, the street improvement district had already been created and was in place, as he alluded to when he purchased the property, and relied upon that too. And I think that there's some confusion about the street improvement district, and there's been some discussion about, well, is it really going to address the drainage issues? I mean, hopefully that it would, if there's going to be stormwater drains that are installed. But the main concern of Mr. DiMarco is not addressing the current state of the drainage, but what just a road maintenance district will do to that drainage. The concern is that it's going to substantially increase the drainage that ends up on Mr. DiMarco's property, because right now, the street is in such disrepair that it's basically a dirt road. But you push, put fresh asphalt on the street, and the drainage is going to substantially increase. And so, that is his main concern, and something that he had no idea that was going to happen when he purchased his property in 2017, because it was his understanding, excuse me, that a street improvement district had been created and it would include the installation of stormwater drains. But going back to the history of the street improvement district, so the street improvement district, which is 6878, was created by the city council, and ordinance was adopted in December of 2016. And that was following the petition of five out of the seven homeowners in Stonham Estates. Stonham Estates is a small subdivision. There's only eight lots in total. Mr., as Mr. Jockham explained, Mr. DeGeorge owns two of those lots. So, in total, there's only seven homeowners. In 2016, five out of the seven homeowners were in favor of the street improvement district and petitioned for a standard street that's 25-foot wide with curbs and stormwater drains. Mr. DeGeorge, as well as the Haley's, who have now signed this most recent petition to amend to a road maintenance district, signed that very petition. After that petition was filed with the city clerk, the ordinance was enacted, the street improvement district was validly created in accordance with the statutes and with the ordinances. The city then started preparing plans. Plans were prepared. The city, as my understanding, has incurred at least $43,000 in costs towards designing with engineers, plans for the street improvement district. Then in 2018, Mr. George and Haley's and Alannum, so three out of the seven homeowners, submitted a petition to decertify and dissolve the street improvement district. In response to that petition, the city said, "Sorry, but you can't do that. There's no mechanism, there's no statutory or municipal code authority to dissolve or decertify or validly create a street improvement district." You had 30 days to protest. Obviously, they didn't protest, because two out of the three were in favor of it. And so, the city said it was going to move forward with the street improvement district. Mr. George was not satisfied with that response, and he filed a lawsuit against the city and included the street improvement district in that lawsuit. In response to that lawsuit, it's my understanding, none of the other homeowners were made a party to that lawsuit. So, initially, I don't even know that all the homeowners knew that this lawsuit had been filed. Within three weeks of the filing of that lawsuit, the city and Mr. George apparently entered into an agreement that, well, if you got a majority of the frontage of the homeowners, which in this circumstance is only three out of the seven, will amend to an RMD, a road maintenance district, which will just consist of asphalt with no drainage, no curbs. And so, that's what's being done here. This is in settlement of a city, in settlement of a lawsuit, when the city previously said, "We can't dissolve a street improvement district." And, you know, I've looked over and over the statutes that deal with street improvement districts, the municipal codes, and I frankly can't see any authority for the city to do this when there was a validly-created street improvement district. How you can just now say you're amending it to a road maintenance district? And before, the city was in agreement with that. But now, the city is trying to say, "Well, we're not getting rid of a street improvement district. We're just amending the ordinance." But the effect is the exact same. You're getting away, you're doing away with the street improvement district and creating a road maintenance district. You can't do that. I mean, there's statutory authority that says, once a petition's filed, you can't withdraw, you can't amend it. And Mr. Jockham argued in his letter that while under its revised statute 14385, the city is not required to make any improvements that have been petitioned for. But here, not only were they petitioned for, they were acted upon by the city. And also, under that statute, even if you could conceivably interpret that as getting the, giving the city this authority, you have to have good reason to do so. I've yet to hear any good reason for amending to a road maintenance district. Settlement of a lawsuit is not good reason. The city had repeatedly, before the filing of the lawsuit, I have an email correspondence where the Public Works Department is saying, "The standard improvement that was selected and petitioned for by the neighborhood is the highest and best means of both meeting the drainage needs and providing for a long-lasting roadway improvement." A road maintenance district is not in the best interest of the city or these homeowners. It's just putting a Band-Aid on the problem. Now, the other issue that I see is I don't know whether the city has any intention of providing notice of this road maintenance district. It seems to be relying upon the statutes that say, "Well, we can create a petition upon a majority of the frontage." And that's the only time that the city can then assess the cost of these roads to these homeowners, is upon a petition. So, the statutes and the municipal code say that when you do that, you have to give notice, it has to be published, you have to give these homeowners an opportunity to submit a written protest, and then there's also an opportunity to appeal. I don't think, it's my understanding, that this is, that's being done here. And so, I don't think the city, even if it could do what it's doing, is complying with statutory requirements to do so and giving these homeowners the right to be heard on this. And that's especially concerning when they're going to be assessed the cost. Now, they're not going to be assessed the total cost, but they're going to be assessed the cost of these improvements. They have a right to be heard on this issue, and they were not presented. I mean, the only reason we know about this is because I got involved, and we filed a motion to intervene in Mr. George's lawsuit. That's how we know what's going on, but there's no information being given to these homeowners. At the end of the day, it's unfortunate that my client has had to engage an attorney and spend attorney fees on this issue. And the last thing that he wants to be doing is fighting with his neighbors, frankly. This is a small street. These neighbors see each other every day. So, it's our hope that we could try to reach a resolution of these issues. And what I would like to see done is that we get everybody to the table, because there's been discussions among some homeowners in the city, but we haven't all sat down together and tried to hash this out and figure out a resolution that's in the best interest of these homeowners, taking everyone's concerns into account and allowing a resolution to be reached so that we can stop fighting, stop litigating, stop wasting time and energy in the courts, and just do what's best for this neighborhood. So, and I'm happy to answer any questions, but I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
My name is Mac Otten, 831 North 89th Circle. Just for background, there's seven houses in the neighborhood. Two are uphill, four downhill, one in the middle. The downhill are the ones that have the water drainage issue. Two of the neighbors, ourselves and our neighbor, Yana Morgan, sent an email this morning at 9:30 a.m. to city lawyer Alan Thieman, saying, "We support the SID due to it fully addressing the drainage issue." We were not informed by the city about the city's acceptance of the proposal from Mr. George to change from the SID to the RMD. Neither was our neighbor, Yana Morgan. However, because we're a small neighborhood, we want to show flexibility. We would support an RMD if the following is taken into account. One is grading of the street so that the water flows into certain areas where we could deal with that water. Yana Morgan has graciously agreed to use 2,000 square feet of her property as kind of a spillway, a drainage area to, if we do have an RMD. And we think this abatement of the drainage, of the water issue, will cost around $10,000. And we would like to have that included into the costs, or have those homeowners that choose to do that, using their own funds, to be reimbursed.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? With that, the public hearing is closed. Or Mr. Festerson?
Thanks, Mr. President. So, this is in my district and has had a long history, as described by both the proponents and opponents here. And I don't dispute any of the history, either from either of them, as to where this started and where it's ended up at this point, to my knowledge. I think that one thing neighbors all agree upon is that the street is substandard, and that's for sure. I've been there many times, including just this last week, and it's, it's to be, much to be desired, it needs improvement of some kind. So, I think everyone agrees upon that. But that might be kind of where the agreement stops at this point amongst neighbors, which is unfortunate to see. And I'm not particularly interested in being the referee of that, but we are in a process here and need to find some kind of resolution or some way out for most, hopefully all, but if not, you know, most or majority of what is, what is only seven neighbors on a circular And I think it also points out the shortcomings of our unimproved road situation in the first place, and the process around that still, that's very clunky and did not serve this neighborhood well, I don't think, in the various turns it did take. And we've asked, we have seen it before in different neighborhoods where I think everyone or most were interested in the SID option, and we're on board with that, and that was kind of going down the, down the path or down the street, you might say. But when it got time for an actual estimate and actual design, sticker shock for sure, and then concerns about what the actual implementation and construction would do to surrounding properties, and in particular, in this case, Mr. George's trees, which are, I think, an important part of the block for everybody. So, that's kind of how we got to where we are now, as was described. Mr. Thielen, I might ask a question of you, since you've been involved in this case as This, the point about the petition process for the SID now converting to a petition process for the RMD is kind of a key question, and is, can you expand upon that and, I guess, confirm that you feel that your judgment and suggestion in that case is, in fact, allowable?
Alan Thielen with the Lot Department. In talking with Public Works Department, I was told that we have done a petition to amend in another case before, so it's not an unprecedented thing. Yes, I do believe that the council has the power to receive a petition to amend and then to grant that petition to amend, to amend a, an SID to an RMD.
And that's based on linear footage in this case?
Any petition under this state law scheme is based on the majority of the front yard footage, so you have to get above 50% to get a petition.
And I believe what we have on this before us today is 62%. But even that's an unusual situation in this case, because that might not be the majority of actual property owners, but it is the majority of linear footage, for sure. And I do appreciate the efforts of, you know, trying to find resolution amongst neighbors here, and the email we got this morning about, you know, preferring the SID that was initially conceived, but, you know, open to RMD situation pending, but is the grading and, you know, drainage issue, I think is the primary issue that Mr. DiMarco has. Mr. Stube, a question for you along those lines. In terms of what's being proposed here, are there any options as to how that would handle grading or drainage?
Bob Stube, Public Works. So, again, as I mentioned at, at pre-council this morning, if I recall correctly, is that water would flow from south to north and also from west to east. And so, in this particular case, when the SID was designed, there were inlets proposed on the east side of the street, and that the sewer would flow back to the west and connect into, which I believe is right of way. It's not a through street, but I think it's Cummings, if I'm not mistaken. That's on the north end of that particular location. So, there was some talk and discussion about addressing both So, there was some talk and discussion about addressing both of the issues, which was to not impact the DeGeorge's property from the standpoint of their steps that leads from the house down to the right-of-way, also some of the trees that would be impacted. But to also address drainage would be by allowing for the RMD on the north end to be modified with adding curbs and inlets and then also including the storm sewer that would take that flow to the other sewer that's in that particular area to the west of these properties. Granted, that's an increase in the total project cost, but it would retain the width of the existing street, which was one of the issues with regard to the SID, because obviously it would increase the width of the street from what's there today to the standard 25-foot width.
So, presumably it could assist with the drainage concerns, but not impact the trees, which are the other concern?
Yeah, and I don't remember with regard to the RMD if there's any trees that would potentially be impacted. I don't believe there is, because again, you're just essentially retaining the existing width of the street, which I'm not sure what that is, if it's 18 feet or something to that effect. I'm seeing nods shake up and down in the audience there. So, yes, you would essentially have 18-foot width, retain the existing width of the paving, but again, you would modify it at where the end of the street is, approximately where the circle is, that you could collect some of that water drainage. Whether it would address all the issues associated with the water that's coming off the west, I can't say that.
Okay. And what this proposal for us today is just amending the petition from SID to RMD, but there'd be several more steps in the process if this was approved next week, right?
That is correct.
And that includes what you're describing in terms of actual design or what, you know, could be an outcome to address that issue and with those costs that would be to, you know, the property owners?
Yeah, there would definitely be some design costs associated with it. I guess I would have to defer to Heather Tippi Pierce to talk about if there's any other process steps that would be required relative to this particular ordinance that you're, in front of you today.
Okay.
Heather Tippi Pierce, Public Works. As was precedent in a previous case where we amended the materials of a district, this is kind of the first step, similar to a creation ordinance, in that it's authorizing the change in material. It would then be followed up with a publication and a 30-day protest period, similar to when we created the district, so that property owners would be noticed, this petition would be certified and published, and then there would be a 30-day period in which opponents could register a protest petition. If that did not win the day, let's say, we would revert back to the original district, which would be the SID. If that protest petition did not come through and this amendment were to survive, then as Mr. Stube alluded to, we would go into an assessment and design process with the RMD. The way the petition was structured for this would be simply a change in material. It would not include dealing with storm sewerage. It was just changing the material from what would be a standard improvement to include concrete curbs and gutters to a traditional RMD. As far as procedurally designing in storm sewers, that would be something that we would have to address, you know, through a design process, again, typical to what we would see in a creation ordinance.
Okay, so several more steps along the way. Mr. DiMarco, if I could, so should this proceed next week? What they're describing and what is, there would be another engagement, actually several more engagements, but if it sustained going forward to an RMD, there would also be a design period and a discussion about drainage and some of the issues that Mr. Stube just described as being a possibility.
Okay.
Does any of that, you know, give you a little bit of peace of mind in terms of the issue you're most concerned about?
Well, yeah, I mean, yes, the drainage. Again, I don't, I cannot stress enough, I don't expect, like, everything to be fixed. I get it, I bought a house at the bottom of the hill, I understand. It was that I didn't want whatever the city did to make it worse, because I know my drains can handle it now. Everything I've got can be handled, because the street's all wiggy-waggy. So, yeah, I mean, if everything, if we can get, like, the costs, like, addressed, because it feels like if I have to put in another, if I have to bolster up my drainage system to the tune of another $15,000, the idea of having to pay for the, like, for the street, I don't necessarily care for that. It's like, I feel like that should be what I put into it. I'm the arbiter of all this water. So, I suppose, yes, if costs and drainage are addressed in going forward with the RMD, I would be, yes, I'm fine with that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, to me, that might be a logical step to take. And again, there'd be several more approvals coming here, so it's not like that would be a final word at all, but it would seem to get the majority of interested parties here back to the table to discuss that issue and see if there's a way to proceed with this that satisfies most interests, hopefully everyone's interest. I would also just say, maybe this is a question for you, Mr. Thielen, and I hope, whatever proceeds here, if something proceeds, that my colleagues would support me in this notion that, this conversation began like two years ago and was one of our initial unimproved street examples when we were trying to address how to handle these and how to cost share and what that policy would be from the city's perspective going forward, which we did eventually adopt, but not very long ago. And so, what's specified in this particular amended ordinance is that the city would cost share at 25% because the new policy says 50% cost share for SIDs and 25% for RMDs. But prior to that, every example we had, and there were lots of them, every RMD and SID got a 50% match upfront. And it'd be my thought and my, I think, proposed amendment, when the time is right, that we cost share in this one 50% too, like we did in all those that originated prior to this policy being in place. If I was to do that, is the appropriate time to do that next week?
Alan Thielen with the Lot Department. That might be a good time to add, that might be a good time to add that as a condition to the approval, just so that everybody knows going in what the intention of the council is. Now, that would be a deviation from the policy that the council passed a few months back. You'd have to look at the policy and see what kind of flexibility there is in the policy. Of course, the council can, I suppose, can deviate from a policy that's adopted by a resolution by another ordinance, but it might be a good idea to, if the council is inclined to go 50-50, to include that next week, just so everybody knows that in advance.
Yep. That'd be my intention, just letting my colleagues know that. And I think this is the only example that's currently outstanding from, it was already deep into the petition process prior to a policy being established, so I would probably, well, I want to say, I intend to propose that next week when we consider this. I'll yield the floor for now. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Yeah, I just have a few comments to say publicly what I did at the pre-council today is, I'm no fan of RMDs. I think they just delay the inevitable of another RMD and another RMD and another RMD, because in this part of the world, the asphalt four-inch overlays just don't last, they don't have the durability. And you're going to be right back in the situation, because you all appear young enough that when this fails, and I have a street in my district that's not even six or seven years old and it's just breaking up, for whatever reason, there's really no guarantees regardless of the formula, recipe they use in the asphalt, given the freeze-thaw cycles, street salt, garbage trucks, heavy weight, heaving, or whatever they call the frost heaves, that these things won't break up. So, my preferred route is, and I've been talking about it for quite some time now, is that the city move to SIDs, because it's a permanent solution. I had some questions on this for Mr. Thielen, because there were some questions by council and representations as to this ordinance being a proposed settlement agreement. And so far as when we settle lawsuits, typically we receive a memo from council that's confidential that advises us of a settlement, that there's what the issues and who the parties are and what the recommendation for a settlement is, and requesting approval and making council available for material client conversations regarding the merits, costs, risks, things like that of each lawsuit. And Mr. Giacomo has a position, that he said, that it's his understanding that this is the city's effort to settle the pending lawsuit brought by his client. And you have counsel for Mr. DiMarco saying, "Well, if this is a settlement, how do you settle a case this way and how do you bring someone into a process for something they didn't petition to be a part of?" So, what say you on that, part of this agenda item here today? And what do you call it?
Thank you. Alan Thielen with the Lot Department. I, yes, I would not characterize it as a settlement agreement. Nothing's in writing. If it was a settlement agreement, we would have come to you folks with the settlement agreement in writing. I would do the confidential memo and all of that. So, I don't think it's really a settlement memo or settlement agreement. What did happen was when this lawsuit was filed by Mr. DeGeorge, who took the position that he wanted this to be an RMD rather than an SID, when that came in, initially we said, "No, you can't just decertify the district." But then it was pointed out to him that, to his attorney, Mr. Giacomo, that one option here that we've done in a previous case was to amend a district. And I think the representation that was made was that if we end up amending this SID to an RMD, that might make your lawsuit moot.
Now, let me stop you there. We, as a council, are asked to consider ordinance amendments all the time. But counsel for Mr. DiMarco raises the point that this RMD/SID process and procedures and requirements in our code and statutes would suggest to her that we have kind of a different situation here with the proposed property owners who may be assessed, having to be a part of a petition process to ask them if this is, in fact, what they want and opportunity as a part of that petition process to either sign or decline to sign. And if a majority petitioned to do something that which the minority doesn't, there's still this protest period that happens, whereas what we have here is bypassing that by amending an ordinance that created an SID, if allowed under law, to an RMD. So, what do you say about that?
Well, the state laws, one of the state laws here that govern these improvement districts says that even if there is a petition and it goes through, the city is not bound to go through with that construction project. Nothing in the petition process requires the city to do that. And I think in this case, we've attempted to take a look at this and say, "Hey, if the majority of the frontage doesn't want this SID to take place, that would, to us, be good cause for not going forward with that project."
Okay. Another argument I heard, and setting aside for the time being if this passes when introduced for vote, today's just a public hearing. But what I thought I heard counsel say was, "Well, you can't charge us for something that we didn't essentially approve or ask for." So, I know they'd have available to them a petition in error if that passes over in the district court and the Board of Equalization, but what do you say in the abstract about that part of the argument?
That could be true about every improvement district. In any improvement district, all you need to trigger it is 51% of the front footage. So, that 49% that oppose an improvement district in any case could make that same argument. Yet, that's what the state law says.
All right. Now, given all of the developments that have occurred over the history of this particular block, which by the way, is only about a block north of where my law office, where I practice, so I go by there all the time. You have lovely homes and I love your neighborhood. Don't love your street. And I stay off of it. But what if Mr. DeGeorge's temporary alliance with his other neighbor proves to unfold? Let's just say Mr. DiMarco and his cohorts continue to talk to this other property owner who then withdraws his support for the RMD, and we're back here again. I mean, what I want to avoid is, how many times can this thing come back in some other iteration before we have a resolution that we can be confident that will last?
Well, I don't know. That might happen. I don't know that there's any way we can predict that.
I think you've made my point, is that for today, it appears we have this percentage of people who support it, but we thought that in other iterations of what's been here on this street.
And the lawsuit may, I mean, if the lawsuit runs its course, it may decide that too. The lawsuit was filed by Mr.
If there's only one, if the only, if the one on file is the only one that gets resolved, but what if there's another one? I mean, that, this is, I don't think it's too far afield here to consider, "Hey, we may not be done with this, even if we think we're done with it and even if Mr. DiMarco thinks he's done with it." So, that leads me to my next point. I'm a firm believer, and I'm sure counsel are, that when your clients can decide their own fate collectively, that it's better to have them do it than have strangers like a judge or a jury or seven council members decide it for you, because invariably, there's people who come out of it who are unhappy. And ultimately, it could be years and tens of thousands of dollars in stress, litigation, before there's some kind of resolution that may or may not be resolved at the trial court level, could be appellate court level. It could go back again, go back up. So, I think there's time for the neighbors to continue your conversation, whether it's informally amongst each other or in a mediation or whatever format you decide. But I would encourage the sides, both sides, to continue talking, because ultimately, I think you'll be more satisfied with the outcome if you do that than if it just continues on this course. And I understand fully, if the posture of this case comes back as it is here today, there probably won't be five of the seven that are very happy with what happened. So, I just encourage you to do that, both sides. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I'm going to cut through the chase. I hear, water's your problem. Where's the water going to go? I hear trees and "Don't disturb my neighborhood." To me, it's basically pretty simple. I heard that you're willing to work with, both sides are willing to work. That's what I'm hearing right now. If we pass this today, work it out. And I think Mr. Festerson is trying to sweeten the pie a little bit by seeing if we would help a little bit more with the money aspect. To me, I think this stuff could be resolved if you guys get together, because there's seven of you, is that not true, or six or seven people?
Eight properties.
Okay, eight properties. And I can see his point, because he has all the land. You have a little bit sliced, like, of the pie, but you've got the water. So, if we cannot, I think, and you have the trees, and I think it'd be nice, because I will argue with Mr. Jerem, I think there are certain parts of the city is what makes Omaha Omaha. I happen to be out west, which is great, but it's a different type of look than when you get to the inner go in there, put the concrete and all that kind of good stuff in there, but this sort of takes away from that feel of the country, like the Rock Brook area. It's a neat area. You go back and it's, gee, this is the middle of the city. I think we ought to keep those areas if we can. But if you so choose to go concrete, I'm not going to argue with that, but I still say I think if we can get this worked out, and I, hopefully, that if we pass this with the, if you don't like what's going on, if I'm not mistaken, they can vote it down. It's in their hands, not ours. So I think it's back in your hands. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's always tough following both of you because I feel like I'm just echoing both things, but there is a couple of things, I mean, I have to say about this. And we talk about a lot of the what-ifs, but the one thing we're not talking about, what if, what if the city at one point continued to take care of this road that may be below the certain PESA rating that now we no longer go there? Would we be here today? I don't know. What if? We're just not doing that. And it's like every single time we see groups of people, neighbors, now look, after you see us today, we don't have to look at each other like you do every day. You're going to have to wave hi or honk or whatever, help each other with your trash or whatever it is. So think about that. And I'm not going to disagree, an SID is longevity-wise probably the best way to go, and the next step down is an RMD. And with what I'm seeing here and what I've seen, I think both of you parties have probably already paid for a couple RMDs, and which, I mean, that's unfortunate in itself. So whether it comes back before us or not, another what-if is how did we get to this point? Who brought it to us based on the neighborhood champion or something that was passed around that said one thing, but once you got to the actual plans or the costs, it changed? And this isn't the first time we've seen this. We're seeing it time and time again. So what we're doing is, we think we're actually helping out the neighborhood by giving you a nicer road to drive on? No, we're actually devaluing these neighborhoods because now you have neighbors that aren't talking to each other anymore. Look, you only have seven houses on this block, so I don't know if the process were to come forward, how it would work. I heard this morning that one owner has 44% if you went by linear foot, and that same owner has 25% if you went by parcels. You guys are going to have to figure this out. And if we go back to the what-ifs, I can only wonder what if we took care of this road five, six, eight years ago, whenever it started deteriorate? Because we all like trees, especially the mature ones you have in your neighborhood. I'm sure if you put a straight, concrete street into your circle, which is only a half block long, how many people would even maybe want to live on that block? Is it desirable anymore? Maybe, maybe not. Maybe the water issue wouldn't matter. So it's not you particular people in this room, it's not your fault you're here. We have a flawed system, and I don't know how to fix it. It's definitely not Ms. Tippy Pierce, Director Stube, or any of us, but we need to figure out how to fix this system before it gets to the point of where now we're seeing neighbors with lawyers trying to figure this out. There's something wrong with it. We figure out a lot, and I think this is something we need to buckle down and try to get taken care of. And I guess I'll just be a broken record when I keep saying that. And again, colleagues, here we are, two parties now with lawyers, trying to figure out the beginning of how we got to this point. We need to fix it. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no more lights. Next item?
One public hearing will be held for items 49 to 51 for ordinances levying a special tax and assessment on all lots and pieces of real estate to cover the cost of constructing and improving road maintenance district 745-29, Garden Road from South 105th Street, south to its terminus, north of West Center Road by Asphalt Overlay. Road Maintenance District 745-30, Leavenworth Street from South 90th Street to South 91st Circle, and 91st Circle south of Leavenworth Street by Asphalt Overlay. And Road Maintenance District 745-31, South 91st Avenue from Shirley Street North to Hickory Street by Asphalt Overlay.
Public hearing agenda items numbers 49, 50, and 51 of today. Proponents, please. Those in favor? Proponents? Any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 52, an ordinance levying a special tax and assessment on certain lots, parts of lots, and pieces of real estate to cover the cost of clearing snow and ice from sidewalks. Group number 2018-01.
Public hearing agenda item number 52 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 53, an ordinance to men, section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code to add the employment classification entitled Threat Assessment and Crisis Intervention. Project Coordinator Personnel Board recommends approval.
Public hearing agenda item number 53 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Tish Mendick, Omaha Police Department, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. I've been coming to a lot of these, and this is kind of the first I've heard of this. So I'm opposed to this item, number 53, and pointing out that I don't know who this is for. It kind of sounds like it might be related to the Juvenile Justice Center or Douglas County Jail. If so, that makes it a joint endeavor. But I'm very amazed that we don't already have a public safety person that's in charge of threat assessment. This doesn't tell me if this is threat assessment against what? Is that against me or a public enemy number one or a Russian? It doesn't say. So I think we need to inform the public through your media partners what this is about. If it's tied to the Juvenile Justice Center, please explain to me how this does not raise my taxes. I don't like to vote for more property taxes or special assessment taxes, which we seem to be, I think somebody used the question, how did we get here? And the system is broken. And then I might like to point out real quickly, before I get run out, that if it is a joint venture, then the comments I made earlier today at the Douglas County Board apply here also. But these rules are, these rules really are confusing, and they need to be put up on a blackboard and a lesson given to the citizens as to how the agenda operates because these rules are different than the rules of the Douglas County Board, and helping reading rule books over there is just an outline of the state outline.
Mr. Store, I'm going to have to stop you now. You're getting far afield on this.
Well, the rules should be similar. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 54, an ordinance to men, section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code to add the employment classification entitled Mental Health Coordinator Personnel Board recommends approval.
Public hearing agenda item number 54 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon again. This is Tish Mendick, Omaha Police Department, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue. Once again, I'm opposed because I think it's not clear as to, is this a city position or county position? Is it related to what? The Douglas County Justice System? Beware mental health coordinators. If they don't ask the right questions, you might commit a youth to the Juvenile Center unjustifiably. Somebody might pick him out of the school system and say, oh, he's a behavior problem. Let's have him assessed. Without parental input? Thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Store, let me say this to you real quick.
I'm sorry?
Let me say this to you real quick. When you read what's on the agenda, there are accompanying documents that are in the council office that you can read that gives you more...
What citizen has time to come down every day and look at all those?
They're online as well. You can get them online.
The agenda is supposed to be printed.
There are company, there are company documents that you can get online or you can come into office and read them.
You see why there's not very many citizens here. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I thought I'd give you, try to give you some advice, but you don't want to take it. That's fine. Go ahead. Next item.
Item 55, an ordinance to men, section 20...
Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Tish, if you would, I think this is an important item and one that we talked about a bit this morning, but just maybe a short summary for folks that are watching because this is such an important issue, I think, in our community about mental health and how the police department has, interacts with people in crisis every day. And we're taking an important step here, I think, by this new position of mental health coordinator that I believe would help coordinate then five mental health designated officers in our five precincts. Can you just describe how that would work a little bit for folks that may want to know?
So we will host five embedded mental health corresponders, and they're actually mental health practitioners that will be able to go on radio calls with officers and show up on scenes and provide services immediately to folks that are in mental health crisis. So they're actually mental health providers.
That's great. And that's in cooperation with Lutheran Family Services, as I recall?
Correct.
And so if an officer is called to a mental health situation, they could take or call that practitioner in to assist them with that call and hopefully either de-escalate any situations or steer folks to proper resources rather than detention.
Right on the spot, exactly.
Yeah. I think that's a great step forward.
And the mental health corresponders also are issued police radios, so they are listening to calls at all times when they're on duty, but they're also able to follow up and offer services to those folks, you know, the next day or a little bit later down the road. So follow-up care.
Is the coordinator also available to interact with the public or take public calls?
Absolutely. And also, the corresponders and the coordinator will be able to assist with law enforcement officers in crisis as well, so we're excited about that, too. So it will enhance our peer support services.
And when approved next week, when will this be in effect?
So the funding is locked in place. I think it will show up on agenda next week, so after those readings, then we'll be able to post the position, and we'll start hiring. We expect to have all the corresponders in place by spring of next year, and the coordinator will be within the next few months.
And the coordinator will be the only actual city of Omaha employee, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Item 55, an ordinance to men, section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code to add the employment classification entitled Sexual Assault Kit Initiative Site Coordinator Personnel Board recommends approval.
Public hearing agenda item number 55 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Tish Mendick, Omaha Police Department, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing proponent?
Yes, sir. 518 North 40th Street. I want to make a comment, touch on what Larry was saying, that the county and the city are looking at the same issue, juvenile health, delinquency. It affects both county and city operations when we have a community that needs help. So I encourage council members to look how, to work with Douglas County because you're servicing the same people. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 56, an ordinance to approve an agreement with HTI Labs in the amount of $62,888 and authorize funding for such agreement from the City of Omaha's Fiscal Year 2018 National Sexual Assault Kit Initiative Grant.
Public hearing agenda item number 56 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Tish Mendick, Omaha Police Department. This is related to our Sexual Assault Kit Initiative Grant funding, so I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Non-action items, items 57 through 74 do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda as well as the date the item is expected to appear on the agenda for consideration.
Roll call.
Jerram.
Yes.
Pauls. Palermo. Festerson.
Yes.
Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 4:44.